Five thirty, we'll call to order the city council meeting of Cresco, Iowa for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Wolkow?
Brenna.
President.
McConnell.
Thank you.
Fortune?
Here.
Buska?
Yes.
Carden?
Present.
And our first order of business tonight is to administer the oath of office to Richard McConnell, who was just elected for his first full term as a city council member. Rich? I'm sure you'll trip over the cord.
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
And if you'd raise your right hand and read that, please.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the State of Iowa, and I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my ability to discharge all the duties of the office, council member in Cresco, and now hereby according my law.
Again, to the council. Here's yours. Okay. Congratulations. You'll have to sign this before Michelle will let you out of the room. We'll act on the consent agenda, which is approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from November one, two thousand and twenty-one, approval of application for tax abatement under the urban revitalization plan for Shea Curtain, and approval of parade permit for portions of Third Avenue and North Elm Street for the Santa's Holiday Parade on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Wolkow?
Carden?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Stafford, couple of works?
Yep. River City Fence was here last Wednesday to start tearing out the fence on up to wastewater plant. They got it all tore out, and they came back today and started installing the new poles. They might only get done what they ripped out. I think they're just gonna kind of run out of time and materials. So the east side that was badly replaced, we'll get that done for sure. The rest of it might have to wait till spring. We had our first water main break on Friday, and it was actually right over here between outside, that's where Barry Pejz wrapped, between Road Park Place and Third Avenue. Pretty strict work, one didn't take very long. Had to face some no time. The gravel shed at the street shop has been completed and filled with rock for future water main breaks this winter. Hopefully they'll have frozen rock pile and can actually use it. Everybody's been staying busy preparing for winter, getting equipment ready and mineralizing equipment. The street guys have been busy with leaves and the gutter lines that they've been scraping up, and I don't think he's sweeping much because it's not working very well this year. And then just a reminder that today was the last day for yard waste picking. The next one will be April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Police.
Only thing to share at this time is our initial conditional offer that we did. We kind of had to put that on hold right now pending some further documentation. And then we did do another additional offer in our second position, and he has accepted that so far, but we have to continue with some more testing and some background checks.
Okay. Hope that works out. Administration?
So I distributed the budget worksheets to the department heads and asked for them to be returned next week if possible. We'll need to amend the budget again, but this time it's a good one. We are gonna get a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more in local option sales tax than I had budgeted.
Oh.
So in November, they always do a makeup, and our check was ninety-seven thousand dollars. And then the rest was each quarter's higher than we had estimated. So I'm kind of trying to figure out why it's so much higher, and we think that part of it is COVID and online shopping. People are paying their local sales tax, it's like going after Rikers or Waterloo or wherever they're doing their shopping. So it's helping our budget a little bit.
And then?
Tomorrow, Teresa and I are going to Waverly for the Iowa League of Cities Budget Workshop. And other than that, been just kind of busy with keeping the head above water. So.
Any committee updates?
We had a theater commission meeting last Monday. We're going to review the rental agreements as far as at the main auditorium area and that. They looked at potentially doing Champlin Hall, but they haven't really reached a point where they feel that it's necessary to bump that up yet because there's no backlog in rentals yet. And then some really good news for people of the arts is they're working out a time for the Luther Opera Group to come over and perform at the theater there. So that's pretty substantial news. It would be really good exposure for the city and for the theater.
Anything else? CIDC was canceled, so, okay. Comments from the audience? Jason?
I just got a few things.
Just as a warning to everybody, we're now posting our videos on YouTube and on, I think, on our website. So we're trying to speak clearly.
But not TikTok.
I just have about twenty-five minutes. Now, I know you have a long agenda, so I'll be real quick. Thanks for Santa's Parade. So we still have room if you want to be in Santa's Parade. It's on Black Friday, as always. Starts at four o'clock, you know, runs from the Fitness Center downtown. So snow, sleet, whatever, Santa's Parade is happening. Before we get to that, though, we do have our chamber and CIDC banquet this Friday night, the nineteenth, so please give me a call, shoot me an email, whatever you need. Still got room for that if you want to get in on that one. I know it's the same night as the school, they scheduled their meet team night that night, but so be it. It is what it is. So we will do ours on Friday night. We're gonna do that right after work, so happy hour starts at five, Jan. We'll be there ready to go, and we'll have a good night and honor some really cool businesses. Just so you guys know, CIDC is honoring Hanson Tire and H&amp;S Motors as Businesses of the Year, so congratulations. And then Quilts of Baller as the Organization of the Year. So Jingle in Your Pocket is going on right now. That'll go on through the night. So again, December night, that is. That is to encourage frequency and shopping early and often, and get your cards for that. And the banks are putting out four thousand dollars that we will give away. So forty people win a hundred bucks, and it's legit. So that's pretty cool. As we were talking about Christmas lights, big thanks to the Boys and Girls CHS basketball teams. They help us do the town Christmas lights, putting them up. The wrestlers come in and help us take them down. So we were able to at least get the heavy lifting done. Now we get the fun of making sure they all work. At least they're up right now. And it wasn't a great day for that, so I'm thinking, yeah, tomorrow, I'm gonna do some check-in and run some around and make sure things work. As you mentioned, theater, theater's got a ton of events going on with shows, free movies and whatever. Check that out. And then we've got some ribbon cuttings. Actually, this week we've got two of them. Got a ribbon cutting for Alanda Meyer at ten a.m. on Thursday, the eighteenth. She's in Holstrom Shops on Elm Downtown. She's in the back, so we'll be doing that. On Christmas Open House, which is this Sunday, in town Salon Synergy. There's a right props from the courthouse here. Salon Synergy is doing their ribbon cutting at eleven a.m. on that Sunday, so that's kind of Sunday. Most of our stores are open from ten to four, some are noon to four, but that's kind of the big Sunday push. And then in December, we hope that we'll be able to do a couple ribbon cuttings. We just mentioned one of them. Thank you for doing the curtains approval, precision overhead doors. Hopefully we'll be doing that in December. They keep wanting that front entrance to be done, and like everything else, everything backed up and backed up and backed up. It's coming in two weeks. And then Sweeney's Lounge. Hopefully we'll be doing that in December also. So a lot of movements, a lot of activity out there. You guys have noticed that, and we'll be in touch if more things kind of get along.
You can go back anytime. Jason?
Oh, got it. These are your jingle cards.
Anyone else with comments? Okay, item one is to open the public hearing to enter into a new contract with Hawkeye Sanitation for solid waste disposal and recycling services. Do you have any questions? Hawkeye is here and can answer any of these questions. Okay, I have a question. What about people who don't have any place to put totes? Like the accounting service that currently is putting their garbage on somebody else's land because the people were okay with it, but they don't have any place to put totes? What do we, what do we do with them?
In the past, we've usually just walked up and grabbed them, because they usually put them in cans, so we just walk up, grab them and take them through the truck. So that's not, you know, a big of an issue for us, so we can just walk up and grab them.
My second question is, Michelle sent you a question that I thought was really good. If you go to multiplex, like a fourplex or a
Right.
tenplex or something, and you answered the question about, so are we gonna have twenty-four totes out there? And the answer was for the garbage, no, you would negotiate dumpster. What about the recycling?
For the recycling, I think we would limit it to two. If it's two or less dwellings, then we would just have the totes. But if it's more than that, we would go to a recycling dumpster.
Oh, so they'd have two dumpsters, a regular dumpster and a recycling dumpster? Okay. Those were the questions that Michelle and I had come up with. Anyone? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. Item two is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement for recyclable and non-recyclable waste collection services with Hawkeye Sanitation, Inc. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alex?
Second.
And Dave?
Wolkow?
Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Carden?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, Wayne Moss to discuss her proposal to build a base of operations at the Cresco Airport.
That'd be us.
Thank you.
You're pretty smooth here. I don't know if I can. My name is Wayne. This is Amanda Timberland, Ops Manager in Parkersburg. Currently, we've been working out of the Cresco Airport for about ten years, doing cover crop and some things like that. And we're looking for a spot that we can kind of have a permanent loading pad fixture, not worry about backing around and parking an airplane if we've got a windy day and things like that. Now, if a storm comes up, we don't have any permanent spot to tie it down. The guys high tail it back to New Hampton, Parkersburg, Elsage. And basically, we've been doing arts milling and a lot of the co-ops around here, but we ferry it from New Hampton, and then we just do mainly the cover crop around town.
Well, what started out was the rules and regulations of the airport changed this last year, and you have to have a portable containment pad for if you're doing any liquid work. We choose not to use the portable containment pads for safety reasons. They have the tarp on them, they have the big bums that you have to go over. It's just really hard on the airplanes, and if you get a windy day and it sets up in that prop, we just, we end up with a mess. So that's why we're looking for more of a solution of doing something permanent, leasing the ground, you know, tenure lease or whatever you guys are comfortable with doing. So that's how the permanent situation came about. We haven't always gone to New Hampton. We've always tried to stay here, but this last year we ended up going over to New Hampton for that reason, is we couldn't, A, we couldn't get a portable pad, and it just, it was not safe. So we did over nineteen thousand acres out of that airport, and you guys can kind of pass this around if you'd like. I have Cresco circled all the old ops or the fields that we did in the area. So we were ferrying anywhere from nineteen to thirty-six miles for each field. So that's obviously added to being quite a bit to where here, we would stay in the hotels, you know, the restaurants, we would keep our business here.
One plane or you got more than one?
We would, the goal's not to not ever have more than two. The only way that we ever get backed up is, I don't know if you're aware of the B law in the state of Iowa? You, anywhere there's a beehive that's registered, you cannot spray that field within, you can't spray within one mile of that field. It has to be before eight a.m. or six p.m. Well, this year we ran into smoke every morning. It was so smoky. And then you have two hours to get it at night. So we were some twelve hundred, thirteen hundred acres behind. At that time, we would try to bring in probably three airplanes just to get that part of it caught up from that time period, but otherwise, two is, you really don't want to congest more than two. It just gets too much.
We've got other planes at other airports.
Right, right.
Basically, we try to, it gets too congested. And I've got a little drawing about the airport here. We would, we're proposing three acres. It might be a little less, and we would be on the south side of that taxiway. So what we gotta do is, we'll work with Memert and Aaron with A&amp;J Construction, they're our general contractors, and what we have to do is get your blessing, and then our company does an environmental impact study. They go way back if there was an unpacking plant there or some trash dump or stay away from that property, you know? And so we gotta get your blessing and obviously, hopefully, we get something rolling by spring and keep our contractors local. We know that they're doing some work for us at another site, so I don't know if you want to pass that around. I had an engineering firm tell us that we can't do anything within two hundred feet of the runway and forty-four and a half feet from the taxiway. So that's kind of why I'm out to the south there. The red portion would be gravel and the bluish portion would be pavement. When I talked to the airport commissioner, I said we don't have any problem paying a lease on the gravel, I mean, on the property.
The lane.
But if we put the lane in and other people are using it, like the farmer or future expansion, we would let the city maintain the lane. You know what I mean? If it's going up to our property, but
We'll put it in, but it won't be part of our lease. It would be the airport's.
Or access, you might say.
Right.
We'd have an easement access if we can get that some kind of load up. So, and you have a building like this in Parkersburg now?
We do. We have one in Osage, we have one in Parkersburg, we have one in Pocahontas, Iowa Falls.
Newton.
Newton.
We work at various airports, gotcha.
Yeah.
And mainly, we deal with the big co-ops, not so much as the individual farmers.
Makes my billing easier.
The farmer goes to his agronomist and says, what do I need for this wheel? And then the local co-op would contract us.
And then that is also
Dave, you asked, are you building anywhere else? This is just a cement pad.
Correct. This is a hangar.
While I make sure Dave was, I'm saying, first we, I talked about, you might ask me today.
Yeah.
As we've grown in, we've grown in, in Osage, we started out there with just a building, and we bought adjacent property with our fuel tanks. We spent a lot of money there, and in turn, they went to the state and got more funding for the airport doing this.
For grants.
For grants, and we are there and busier and pulling in more and more. So we used to be Plinkenberg area, and then three years ago, we had a quiche.
December of two thousand and nineteen.
So we've been at this for years, but the quiche Midwest is the firm.
Wayne, can you talk just a little bit about some of the local contractors you use? And you were using this project as what you used on your Parkersburg or something like that?
So down our way, construction is very, very active. Shaw Rock are building a two-hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar soybean processing planters. Contractors, everyone I talked to was, oh, boy, we can't see for two years. So Aaron with A&amp;J, I got ahold of him, and he bid us a nice big building down there, and that was his friend.
It's five hundred and twenty.
And that's where Doom Hangman was putting there. They're putting it up down there for us, and the supplies are coming from Spottin' Rolls. It's pronounced Memert, is that correct?
Yep.
They do all, they're doing all the dirt work and all in the rock, and so we're familiar with your business.
I'm trying to talk, and then you go into Pocahontas. He said that might be a little too far for him, but we are building there as well, so we're hoping that he can, would also take over that because he's been fabulous to work with.
Good to go.
Yes.
Now, with that, with the cover crops and everything else, and you mentioned liquid, is there anything storage-wise that we have to have here as far as DNR permits and things like that for storage, or is that something that you wouldn't
So we don't actually store any of the chemical on site. So what would happen is there would be an eight-hundred-gallon holding tank in underground, like with the, under the cement. So our largest airplane holds eight-hundred gallons of liquid. So if for some reason on the pad there was a spill, it would hold that spill. So that's why we go to eight-hundred gallons. And they don't make any airplane bigger than that at this time, so, and we don't plan on getting one any bigger than that. So that's why we do the eight-hundred-gallon holding tank, and then we would pump it out in the event of a spill. And we would still have to call the DNR if there was some kind of spill like that, just to make sure that they come out, they give you the okay to pump it out and all of that. Like we still make sure that that's all kosher on that end of it. The Iowa pesticide bureau states that in the state of Iowa, you only have to have one engineering pad. We have that in Parkersburg, so it would, we wouldn't have to build like an engineer pad, but I can tell you from the pad we have there, that's what it is. Pretty like it's just the holding tank part of it. And we do that for our own safety. I mean, we don't want to dig up dirt if we have an accident. We don't do a lot of mixing on site, especially here, the co-ops bring it pre-mixed, so we don't, we don't do a lot of the mixing ourselves.
You don't do any herbicides?
No herbicide.
Just fungicides and cover crop.
Got airport people here. Anything else that you
We discussed that at our last meeting, and we had a vote to recommend that. We're excited.
Okay. Did we, it doesn't say vote, so can we vote? I mean, because you said you wanted our blessing to ask your engineer to proceed, right?
Correct. We have to, we've got, this is our first step, to get your blessings, and then they do that steady, the soil steady and
And then we create a lease.
Yep, we'd create a lease between our, yep, or you guys, yep.
Based on that, Michelle, I think these guys probably got a pretty professional group for creating leases.
That's good to say. That might be all that.
And I would bet money they could come up with a standard one that would fit us.
So the company that owns us actually is out of, so I don't know if you're familiar with the town co-op. So they, they created this diversified application, which is what brought us out, and so their lawyers draw up all that stuff anyway, and they'll add my lead together.
Yes, absolutely. True.
Do we need a motion to go?
That's what I would say. Motion to proceed when they're first step.
Second.
Wolkow?
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Carden?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
We appreciate you guys coming on.
Thank you.
Item four, review bids for land lease agreement for the airport farmland. Now, this is not what we were just talking about.
Thank you.
Farmland part.
Although, we were renting seventy-nine acres, so now we might be using seventy-five acres because we may be renting three acres.
I have a bid from Steven Malati at two fifty-one per acre. A bid from Matt Minor, or Minor, a bid of two seventy an acre. And then one last bid from Brian Schmidt at three hundred and twenty dollars an acre.
So I've got Malati, two hundred and fifty-one per acre, Minor, two hundred and seventy, Bober, two hundred and three, and Schmidt, three hundred and twenty.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, makes it look like it's red.
Second. That was Richen, Richen, Jan?
Yep.
Wolkow?
McConnell?
Yes.
Carden?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna? Yes.
And this is a street year lease, right?
It's a fifty percent increase for your
Item five, I hope we're just, it's successful going down this list. Item five, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a farm lease agreement. Do we have a motion? Boom.
Second.
Jan and Rich, Wolkow?
McConnell?
Yes.
Carden?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna? Yes.
Item six, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an engineering services agreement with Clap Saddle Garber Associates. This is the engineering for the runway project. Boom.
Second.
Jan and Dave?
Brenna?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carden?
Yes.
Item seven, review and possible word of contract for new air conditioners at the Fitness Center.
We received two different quotes. One from LT Mechanical for seventy-five thousand, seven forty-four, and that's for four ten-ton condensing units. And from Cresco Heat and Vent, the quote was forty-five thousand, two thirty-six, seventy-eight, and that's for two Lennox twenty-ton condensing units. So they both have forty-ton total. They come at it different. One's with two air, two air conditioners and one's with four.
They both worked at the projects?
They both walked through the project, and then they had three weeks to come up with their, the thirty thousand. It's thirty thousand dollars difference. There's not much on the quote, so I can't really, I assume that they're the same. They both say for the piping.
Does it all feel electrical or no electrical?
Cresco Heating, looks like it includes the electrical. LT Mechanical excludes the high voltage electrical work, so it's not included in the seventy-five thousand.
Michelle and I were kind of astonished at the thirty thousand dollar difference. So we actually called the engineer who did the study at the Fitness Center and said, do you have any comments, you know, about the difference? And the fact that one was two times heavy and the other was four times ten, you know, one more efficient than the, and he said, he didn't have enough information to say which was more efficient, but there is no way that efficiency could make up a thirty thousand dollar difference over the lifetime of the mechanical.
Right.
I mean, he wasn't, this wasn't part of the review, it was already dead.
The high voltage requirements, so is it, is it power that we already have there? Are we going to have to bring that in?
I don't think we'd have it there.
Right. Being there's four ten-ton units up there currently.
Yeah.
So what this says is excludes high voltage electrical work. Four new circuits with disconnects will be needed. I don't know.
So you're gonna
What extra electrical work isn't?
If you're running four new circuits, is that coming off the transformer directly into the building? Because at that point in time, I just did it at my business, thirty thousand dollars does not go a long way right now for that.
Except the electrical's in the cheaper one. All it says is
Oh, it is in, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It's our
But he says electrical.
Yeah.
Now, does he realize that he has to pay that? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought it wasn't in there.
Did that call me to walk through it for
No, it was actually the guy who worked for
Randy?
Marv Smith, I believe. I don't know. Randy Lock is in process of buying Cresco.
Have Lock, has Lock.
Sure.
So Randy and Daryl, well, Randy walked through it, I don't
I don't think they're
I don't know Daryl did it.
No.
Randy came up with it after him, I'm not sure.
Assuming the city feeling the need that we asked for, I guess it seems pretty obvious Assuming that they're filling the need that we asked for, I guess it seems pretty obvious. Even though it's far apart.
What, what I took from it is, especially as we get into the bigger projects with the fitness center, we need to have an engineer write the specs because part of the problem was, we said, "Okay, come up and look at this and tell us what you would put in." And we got something that obviously is so different, that when we get to the big stuff, the hundred and, the four hundred thousand dollar stuff, that we, we need to write the specs.
And the cooling tons are the same.
Right. And what, what the engineer told us was, cause Michelle and I, our concern was, well, does this mean you can't stage? You've got two twenties, so I either have to have all of the twenty on. And Mr. Lowson said, "No, there's probably staging inside the twenty ton, just like there is in..." So he wasn't too concerned about that. But they didn't specify.
Say.
The efficiency or, or the stages or anything. It was frustrating.
And I know Larry was saying that his were going up on November first and the Lennox is only good for ten days, the quote, because their prices are going up after ten days. So we, we could hold off, hired engineer, have it scuffed out and then go back out for bids. But the prices just keep going up and up and up and so. And there is quite a lead time. Cresco Heating was making sure that we wouldn't need it before spring, so by the time they get it ordered and get it here with all the parts and stuff, it will be a kind of a spring project, but we will have to pay some as soon as we accept the proposal.
What were the two numbers again, thirty-five?
Forty-five, two thirty-six, seventy-eight. And seventy-five thousand, seven forty-four.
Forty-five, two thirty-six.
Correct.
Seventy-five, seven forty-four plus electrical.
Did you have any part of that made to them?
Like Michelle and I discussed, I mean, they both walked through and had their opposite views, so. Now it'd been different if one of these went out and what he said we think he did.
So for instance, Cresco Heating and Vent had no idea maybe what LT Mechanical was.
They knew that we had forty ton in there right now.
That's all they knew.
Well, if we decided to have an engineer look at it, we'd be paying that price again.
Yeah, I don't.
So I would make the motion to go with, um, the lower bid, which was what Cresco Heating and.
Cresco being front?
I'll second that. So that's Jan and me. Both call?
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Although it feels really weird.
Item eight, abstracted votes as certified by the Board of Supervisors of Howard County and the State of Iowa.
So I am required to read this, so I'm sorry it's boring, but, um, it's supposed to go into our minutes, so. Abstracted votes are, um, signed by the, um, Howard County Supervisors. So Cresco Mayor race, David Breno received six hundred and thirty-one votes. Troy Cleveland, one hundred and fifteen votes, Kelly Gash, one hundred and fifty-nine votes. So for a total of nine hundred and five votes, we therefore declare David Breno duly elected for the office of Cresco Mayor for the term of two years. Cresco Council Member-at-Large, Richard McCallum, received eight hundred and six votes, scattering sixteen votes for a total of eight hundred and twenty-two votes. We therefore declare Richard McCallum duly elected for the office of Cresco Council Member-at-Large for the term of four years. Cresco Council Member Second Board, Amy Buska, received three hundred and seven votes, scattering ten votes, total of three hundred and seventeen. We therefore declare Amy Buska duly elected to the office of Cresco Council Second Board for the term of four years. They also, there was the, um, public measure, shall the Library Board of Trustees and City Council of the City of Cresco, Howard County, State of Iowa, be authorized to change the Library Board of Trustees by. They don't say what, I think, cause it just says by, um, seven hundred and seventy-one votes. Yeah, they didn't fill it in on either one. All three of the public votes, public measures were approved, but doesn't specifically say. Which is which, um, but it was having a three-term limit, going from nine trustees to seven.
Um, the cap on the number of terms.
And, yeah, they are limited to three consecutive terms, so all three of those passed.
Do you have to read up about those?
Oh, there's seven hundred and seventy-one votes positive, one hundred and sixteen against. I'm not sure which one that was. Uh, eight hundred and twenty-three yeses, seventy no. And seven seventy-six yes, one fifteen no. So I will have to get which, which of those votes went with which of the public measures.
Okay. Item nine, discuss David Breno's letter of resignation from the council effective December the thirty-first to twenty twenty-one.
I quit.
Due to his election to the, well, I'll just read it. On November fifth to twenty twenty-one, I was elected to be the next mayor of Cresco, Iowa. Therefore, I respectfully resign from the City Council at-large position effective twelve thirty-one, twenty-one.
November second.
Oops, November second, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, so that's that for that.
And we certainly thank you for your service and.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten, notice of, notice, motion to publish a notice of intent to fill the council position by appointment. So Dave is gonna move over here and move back over there, we need to fill that seat.
So there's two ways we can fill that seat. We can call for a special election or the city council can appoint. And if the city council chooses to appoint, then we need to put a pa, notice in the paper that we are intending to fill it by appointment. That person would be appointed until the next regular city election. So I guess you guys need to make a motion whether to do a special election or whether you want to appoint.
Could an election cost roughly two thousand?
Oh, probably like that.
Three thousand dollars?
I'd guess.
And make a motion for an appointment and second that.
Dave? Yep. And then, uh, so from the last time that we filled a position, I've got an application form ready to go. So once that goes in the paper, we'll have to fill out an election form and, or a.
Application?
Application form. And then I had a nice little calendar of my timing. Um, but we would have them come do, and kind of depending on how many, last time we did like a work session before the council meeting and ask questions. So depending on how many come in, we'll just apply that by year. Um, but we'll probably invite the applicants to come. And then the, we, council would apply, appoint that person on the December twentieth meeting, um, effective January first. Okay, that's okay with everybody?
Yep.
Well, it's worked so far, we got Rich and Alex who reached out through appointment, right?
I don't know, you ended up with me.
Stuck with you guys or what?
And you put that in the paper, for instance?
Yep, so I will send that to the paper this week, it'll be published next Wednesday.
Item eleven, discuss mayor pro temp responsibilities and rate pay.
So it's in our ordinance that the city council can, um, pay the mayor pro temp if they want to. Amy has really been running the meeting since at least September first, so I would say September, October. And she will in November and December. I'm just kind of wondering if we would like to compensate her. Mark had, um, we paid Mark through October thirty-first and the salary is four thirty-three, thirty-four a month. And, and, and my, my position is I'm getting paid as a council member. I did, I'm just bringing it up, I guess Dave had kind of, we had both kind of talked about it and. Definitely putting the hours in.
Yeah, I think we make the motion to do that because then we've done the job.
And do what, how much or do the same salary or the salary minus the council pay or? I don't care how you do it.
I think you do the salary and subtract the council pay, right?
Yeah, right. Like the four thirty-three minus the hundred and fifty or whatever the council would be that much?
Well, second.
So her total will be four thirty-three, thirty-four, just won't get any council pay. Does that work?
Okay.
No, September she's already been paid the council pay. So I could go back and do the difference, but.
Well, except Mark was getting paid.
Yeah, so Mark was getting paid those first two months, so I don't.
I don't think we should double up, though. I mean, Mark, Mark was signing papers.
You're okay with just the council pay for those and then November and December you'll get the mayor? Okay.
And in this, in this setting, she can still vote, though, correct?
She still votes, yes. As mayor pro temp, she has all the authority that the mayor has, but she also has all of the voting power that the council member has, so.
Although one wishes one had not gotten this the way you did.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so Jane, did you make that motion?
Well, Richard did, and I, I.
Buska?
I think I should abstain.
Okay. Fortune?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Twelve, resolution approving the city's street finance report and authorizing the city clerk to file with the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Um, this is an annual report, we have to file every year. This is, the state collects all the gas tax and licensing fees. And then they distribute it out to the cities, but one of the requirements is you have to file this. If you don't file it, you don't get the road use tax, so we definitely have to file it.
No move.
Second.
Jan and Dave, both call?
McCallum?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Item thirteen, resolution determining the necessity and fixing the date for a public hearing on the matter of the adoption of a proposed amendment number one to the amended and restated twenty sixteen Cresco Urban Revitalization Plan for the Cresco Urban Revitalization Area.
I can tell I didn't name it. Allers included, though. So this is basically extending, our current tax abatement would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. This will extend it till December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Increases the exemption for residential to the maximum exemption under the state law, which is five years, one hundred percent up to the first seventy-five thousand dollars added. And then because the state renamed multi-residential property, now it's called properties having three plus separate dwelling units. So our, what we would do is the residential portion would be exemption for residential properties for ten years at fifty percent. So that's what we had talked about back in April, we started talking about this. So that's, that's in the proposal. So what we need to do is we need to set the public hearing for December sixth.
Make the motion that we set the hearing for December sixth at five thirty?
Second.
Breno?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Um, item fourteen, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an engagement letter with the law offices of Anderson Wilmar, Vandermounten, Belay, Fredhun, Giff, Alva, Sizer, Olson, Lynch, and Zahaski. And this is to back up Joe as our city attorney.
Want to make that?
Second.
Which one actually will be the attorney?
Ann Anderson. I have a meeting and I was over this, it's like a really nice guy.
That's quite a mouthful. I was just making ink.
I think it's every licensed attorney in DeCora.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Item fifteen, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an information technology services agreement, statement of work with Solutions Inc.
So Solutions is the one that does our firewall and then if we have any computer issues, they help us with that. You recommend, you recommend, yeah, really like working with them this past year.
No move.
My second.
Jan and Rich?
Fortune?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
And Buska?
Yes. Item sixteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a twenty-eight E agreement with Northeast Iowa Community Action Corporation.
So if you, what we're doing, yep, so if you recall, the auditor, um, reported that the state auditor is really cracking down on cities, giving money to other, um, non-profit organizations into other governmental entities. And that we have to provide, um, proof of, um, public purpose and what they'll actually be using the money for. So you either have to have an itemized invoice or enter into twenty-eight E agreements. So this is the first one of several that'll be coming across. This one was Northeast Iowa Community Action. We have pledged to give them three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which is a dollar for population, which we might owe to twenty, by twenty dollars, since our population went up by twenty, but. So it's a little less than four thousand dollars that we have to.
No move.
Second. Jan and me?
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Item seventeen, set public hearing to amend chapters one oh five point ten, one oh five point fourteen, one oh six point oh two, and one oh six point oh eight, subparagraph one in the City of Cresco Court of Ordinances pertaining to fees for recyclable and non-recyclable waste. So this is just setting the public hearing.
Yep.
December sixth at five thirty?
Yep.
So, second.
So, Fortune, Dave?
Both call? McCallum?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Item eighteen, first reading of the summary of proposed ordinance four ninety-two, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending chapters one oh five point ten, one oh five point fourteen, one oh six point oh two, and one oh six point oh eight, subparagraph one pertaining to the fees for recyclable and non-recyclable waste. This is what I have to read, right? This is.
Yep.
Okay. Below is a summary of ordinance four ninety-two. A full copy of said ordinance may be obtained between eight AM and four thirty PM weekdays at City Hall, one oh, one thirty, North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa, five two one three six, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending chapters one oh five point ten, one oh five point fourteen, one oh six point oh two, and one oh six point oh eight, subparagraph one pertaining to waste storage containers and recycling program for solid waste control and vehicles and fees for recyclable and non-recyclable waste. Being enacted by the city council of the City of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section one, sections modified. Chapter one oh, one oh five point ten describes the container specifications. Chapter one oh five point fourteen states that all recycling shall be commingled and shall not be separated by the use of paper sacks or plastic bags or other items. All food containers must be cleaned. Chapter one oh six point oh two states that each household will be furnished one cart for commingled recycling and one cart for non-recyclable waste. Light commercial accounts that do not require dumpster will be furnished one cart for non-recyclable waste. Chapter one oh six point oh eight, subsection one lists the fees that will be charged. Solid waste residential effective January one, twenty twenty-two. Solid waste residential, effective January 1st, 2022, 1,856 per month, where at least one resident is 65 years of age or older. Effective when carts are furnished, 2135 per month. Again, where at least one resident.
Those are the regular rates. The cheaper rates are down at the bottom.
Why do we have a boost if you're on? Oh, okay, okay. Forget that. Solid waste for young people, 1,856, January 1st, 2022, and effective when carts are furnished, 2135. Recycling, namely residential, effective January 1st, 2022, $5.14 per month, effective when carts are furnished, $5.91 per month. Solid waste light commercial, effective January 1st, 2022, $23.02 per month, and effective when carts are furnished, $26.47 per month, where at least one resident is 65 years of age or older. Effective January 1st, 2022, 1,785 per month, and when carts are furnished, 2035 per month. Fifty-three per month. You better cut the pay. All rates increased by 4% on January 1st for the next four years ending December 31st, 2026. Section two, separability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage and approval and publication as provided by law, passed and approved this blank day. And we're looking for a motion on that.
Motion to approve the first reading. That would.
So moved. Second.
Do you get to do that two more times?
Oh, goodie.
Breno?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Yes. Nineteen, memorandum of agreement between the City of Cresco and Howard County regarding changes in precincts and boundaries.
So based on the latest census, we have to try to equalize the number of orders in each of the wards. And our wards affect the county's districts for their supervisors. So if you notice on the map, there's four different districts, even though in the city we only have three wards. So District 1 and District 4 for the city are all combined into Ward 1. And then Ward 2 is actually District 2, and then Ward 3 is District 3. So by changing the boundaries just a little bit, Ward 1 picks up Webster's and a little bit around the school there. But that brings us within 18 population in each of our wards. So you have to be within a 1% discrepancy. So this brings us really close to being equal.
This is the county one.
So this is the county, the city has to approve our wards first, and then after the city approves our wards, then the county approves their wards, or their districts. So this first memorandum of agreement is just stating that they're splitting our Ward 1 into Ward 1A and 1B. But we have to enter into this agreement to go to the next step.
So we really don't have a choice, right? We really don't have a choice.
Right. Well, we could take, we could send the map back and say we want to change the lines, but that would be pretty terrible.
Doesn't affect the council seats, correct?
And, right, the council right now, and we can't base it on that, but luckily, nobody changes. So you three that are wards, you're on the right area.
I'll make the motion. There's nothing else to change.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Item 20, set public hearing to amend chapter 3.01, paragraph 2, 3.02, and 3.03 in the City of Cresco Court of Code of Ordinances pertaining to voting precincts and wards. December 6th at 5:30?
Yep. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And Buska?
Yes.
Item 21, first reading of the summary of proposed ordinance 493, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending chapter 3.01, paragraph 2, 3.02, and 3.03, establishing new voting precincts and wards within the City of Cresco, Iowa. And I am so glad we do not have to read all of the descriptions. Summary of ordinance 493, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending chapters 3.01, paragraph 2, 3.02, and 3.03, establishing new voting precincts and wards within the City of Cresco, Iowa. Below is a summary of ordinance 493. A full copy of said ordinance and map may be obtained between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM weekdays at City Hall, 130 North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa 52136, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. Chapter three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, voting precincts and wards. Purpose, boundaries for the voting precincts and wards changed due to the 2020 census. Section two, separability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or constitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law and effective for elections held after January 15th, 2022, passed and approved this data effectiveness. So we encourage everybody to come and get a copy of the map and see what ward you want now live in. So moved.
Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
There's some deadlines. The city has to do all of these ordinance changes within 60 days of the governor passing it. So we'll be fine, but the county can't move on making their changes until the city has gone through theirs. So at the next meeting, if it's okay with you, we'll have the public hearing, we'll have the second reading, and then we'll waive the third reading so that we can approve it that night to move it on to the supervisors, if that's okay.
Item 22, discuss issues regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Jen?
Okay, I checked with Audrey at Public Health this morning. The positivity rate is at 10%, and we are higher than all the ceramic counties. COVID initial doses in booster clinics continue. Vaccination rate for Iowa is 64.1 vaccinated. Howard County has 59.9%. Winnebago, 65.5. Mitchell, 55.7, and Chickasaw, 62.4. They are starting the pediatric clinics. It's the same process for signing up, and the first one will be held this Saturday morning. Regional health services and the nursing homes are mandating vaccination or exemption paperwork prior to entering as per federal mandate that federal money will be withheld to include Medicare and Medicaid effective December 5th.
So on that note, it sounds like we've been watching in the news, but the, OSHA came out with the regulations for the new mandates. And so if you have over 100 employees, you have to have proof of vaccination or you have to start wearing masks. And then January 5th, you have to start providing a negative COVID test weekly, and we have to track all this. So we counted our employees, and unfortunately, we have just over 100, like 105 or something. Right now, it's caught up in the court system. They've put a stay on it. But if the courts rule in favor of this mandate, December 5th, we have to start enforcing it. I've gotten notice that I should be.